Okay, so any additions to the agenda? Public comment, well you're public, but you don't have to say anything if you don't believe.
We all polted against you.
You're just visiting now. Approve the previous minutes. Well, yeah, but I didn't, I didn't find those on the email.
Okay, there was a link sent around last night with a complete meeting packet with a whole...
Everything on it.
Yeah.
The 248 pages.
Yeah, yeah, it was lengthy. I put the agenda and the minutes up front, but if people haven't had enough time to review those and whatnot, I propose we just table that and do all this meeting plus those two next time.
I wasn't there for the last meeting, but I did catch one thing if you want to write it down.
Yeah.
You put the Underhill Sidewalk as a title for two sections in a row.
Oh, okay.
That's all, not substantive at all.
From the last, okay.
So shall we put the minutes off till the next meeting?
Sounds good.
Okay. So that brings us down to the local option tax update.
Okay, this one is Brian. Oh no, sorry, that's me, I'm sorry, I was thinking about something else. So, I looked in, I finally made contact with Joe McClain, town's lawyer. He informed me that, that it does seem like Underhill does need to undergo a charter change before it can legally institute a local option tax for the things that we were talking about. So, I guess the folks that, some of the folks that, at the tax department who were advising us otherwise initially were mistaken or just going off of incorrect information or something like that. So, according to Joe, we would need, the town of Underhill would need to first pass a charter change in order, enabling the town to put into place a local option tax before it could move to put in that local option tax. So, that's where we stand. It's possible, but it would require a charter change and that's the update.
Is that a valid?
There's a bunch of procedures that go along with it. Do you know, if you don't explain it? It's kind of like changing the bylaws where like we have to approve it and have hearings and send this to someone else and it like there's a process that you have to go through and then Sherry knows all about it because we did the charter change to get it allowed.
So I think my question maybe to just to the group is, does it make sense to take to the select board sort of where we are and see if they, this is something they want to continue to pursue if they think it makes sense from a revenue perspective? And if so, then it sort of comes back to our court and maybe we can speak with Sherry, et cetera. But maybe we just ask the select board if, you know, maybe they just say, no, we're not interested in the charter change. Or maybe they say, yeah, you know, can you get us some details on how much revenue it might be? Maybe we just take it to them as is and see what they say.
Yeah, I think they'd have to initiate it unless we got a petition up and forced their hand, but I don't think that's really, since we're a town body, I don't think we should do that.
No, totally agree, I mean...
So we should probably bring it to their attention if we think we want to do it.
So should we try to come up with some ballpark number where we think the revenue might be?
I think the charter changes...
...general sort of a thing which would allow for a wide variety.
Well, yeah, so the charter change enabling local option taxes would, I mean, I'd assume we would, if it were to go, if it were to be, you know, attempted, we'd probably want to write it giving the town broad authority to, you know, do a variety of different local option taxes and not just limited to, yeah, and not just limited to Airbnbs, so...
Although that might be harder to get voter approval.
It might be harder to get voter approval, yeah, it was sort of enter political territory. I mean, two notes, one, a charter change does require of like, a signature from the governor, requires legislative approval.
I think that's given for this part though.
Yeah, so there's that sort of obstacle. And then the other, and as far as revenue goes, I mean, I was looking into it. I think there's a couple dozen Airbnbs in town. A local option tax would be a 1% tax on top of, of what each of their nightly revenue would be. So it can be really tricky because we have no idea how many nights per year each of those Airbnbs is being rented out for. The prices change sometimes and then, and then the town wouldn't even collect that full 1% that they're pulling off of it. Some of it goes to the state and some would go to, I believe, the processing company that kind of...
70/30.
Yeah, it's essentially a 70/30 split.
Honestly, I'd be, I think this is something, I don't know how others feel, but I think this is something we could take to the select board as is and say like, look, any revenue projections would be assumption built on assumption built on assumption. This is like, sort of a philosophical decision to make and if you want us to, we can dig in farther. But before we spend any more time on it, like what do you all think about this?
I agree with you.
Yeah, I agree with you too. I don't think we have got a ton more work on unless they're into it. Yeah.
Hey Nick, do you want to, oh sorry David.
No, I was just saying, okay, I guess we agree with him.
Nick, do you want to reach out to Brad to get a, try to get on the select board agenda or do you want me to do it?
Um, yeah, I can reach out to Brad for sure.
I mean, I think we need like literally five minutes, 10 minutes, you know? It's more of a philosophical decision they have to make.
Sure, sure, sure.
So when I talked to Brad a while back, he said that he didn't have enough information from us about what, how would this be about or how much, you know, he said he needed more information from us. So I'm like, well, what does that mean? And he, he couldn't come up with any answer for me, so. I don't know, you asked...
I can talk to him directly if he kind of says he doesn't want to put us on the agenda and just keep me in the loop and I can figure out what he wants. Okay. Thank you Roy.
Yeah, I think that once we, if I just explain, we've done some, done some digging and come up, we've come up with some, some new information that it seems worth bringing before the select board, but we want their guidance before we do anything with that information, one way or another. I think that's a pretty reasonable thing to use of select board time. I think Brad should have no problem with that, so, yeah.
Yeah, hopefully.
Do that and I will send it in email. Yeah.
Hey, the audio is really bad. I can, I heard Roy and I catch about 50% of what Nick is saying. I don't know if it's my end.
No, it's probably me, I was talking into the computer there, sort of towards the mic.
So, okay, I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is bylaw review process update.
Okay, this is one I was, I think Brian wanted to make a comment on this one. Is that right Brian?
Yeah.
Uh, sure, but you go, I mean, you go ahead Nick to do something.
Yeah, I mean, so basically, I was, I don't really have a formal proposal per se, but I was thinking about, this is something I was thinking about a few weeks ago, now we're getting around to it. But I was thinking, you know, maybe going line by line through the bylaws is maybe not the best way, most efficient way to tackle that project. So what I was thinking about doing, seeing as we have, you know, we've talked about applying for a grant in the future to hire a lawyer and to conduct a more thorough bylaw review. And it seems like given, you know, some of the stuff we're doing with ARPA and stuff like that, we're probably a few weeks or if not months away from resuming that project. But I was thinking that when we do, that maybe a good way to do it, to approach it would be to split into, you know, individuals or pairs basically and then take on sections. And then, and write up sort of, do a review, do a close reading and then return to the committee or the commission with ideas for things that need to be rewritten, things that need to be added, things that they should be, be removed. And then as a commission, we could go through, you know, different members' sections and revisit. So that way the whole commission would have a chance to visit the whole text, but we wouldn't all be reading it for the first time and then taking up, and then deciding to form an opinion in that split second. I think it might give people a little bit more time and a little bit more inspiration if they had, well, more time and a narrower focus that they can train their mental energy on and then we could have a collegial discussion afterwards. So I wanted to sort of like propose that as something that we could, you know, for when we do start revisiting bylaws.
Well, I'm not sure, I think, I think it's a good idea to, for us all to be reading through the bylaws, especially with new members on the planning commission, you know, so. But I think it's, the way we have been doing it is preferable to me anyway.
Okay.
I don't know how others feel about that.
I feel like sort of the opposite. We have new members who don't really have the full context of a lot of the sections and if we were to work in groups, then people might actually learn a little bit more about, you know, how the bylaws apply to the town plan and other, other plans. I think you have, yeah, go ahead Brian.
Oh no, you, sorry Sandy, sorry.
I'm done.
My only comment I wanted to flag for people is pointing out the super obvious, which was I just wanted to make sure, you know, that's a bit more of a time commitment for everyone because we would have to do stuff outside the meetings and come back. And I just wanted to see how everyone felt about that in addition to just the general idea from Nick. I know I'm pointing out something really obvious, but I thought it was worth highlighting.
Yeah, I agree, the line by line is not very efficient. I think there's definitely value for us to reading it all value by line, but it's, I don't think it's an efficient use of our time. I don't have a ton of, outside of meeting time to be studying the bylaws, but I'm lucky that I was at ZEA for a while, so I kind of understand them already. So I think that's a little bit easier for me to take. I don't know how it would be for you guys to take a little bit of homework or not.
Any other comments on that? Roy?
I could go either way, I guess. I think if we did it line by line, it might be better if we were to really write down our thoughts a little more than... It seemed a little haphazard the last time we were doing it, although I think we did accomplish quite a bit. So I think it's, I think it's good if we're all reading it and going over it at the same time. So if we had different groups that were to study different portions of it and then come back and sit at the table and everybody goes over those sections, you know, together, then maybe that would work, but...
I guess that's probably more, a better way of describing what I was proposing is not, rather than say like, you're going to take these, this and then we'll follow what you, whatever you guys do and then sort of say like, have some people sort of be the leads on a particular section or subsection to examine it and then bring their findings back, at which point we would sort of conduct our line by line review and say like, let's take a look at 4.13, go through all that and then say, okay, well, you know, the people who read this outside of, out of the commission, you know, thought this, but we've all, you know, had a chance to read it now. Does anyone agree, disagree? That's kind of how I envisioned doing it, but there is no real prescribed process for doing these bylaw reviews. And a lot of towns just basically just, yeah, they don't do it and they just give it to, if they do anything, they'll hire a consultant to just go through and have it like adjusted to comply with state laws and call it a day. So we're going way, way above the call of duty, which is great. But, yeah, I was just kind of thinking, I was just a little concerned that maybe the way we're going about it might put us in a place where there are new state laws that are going to get passed during the time that we're doing the review that we're going to have to go back and account for, further extending the review. So I'm just, this is more of an attempt to balance time with productivity than it is to, to take a hammer to the process. But just some thoughts, I don't think this is something we necessarily have to come to a conclusion on tonight, but I wanted to throw it out there because I know that returning to the, there's been some public comment and some interest here on the commission of revisiting, getting back to that project. So while that is on the horizon, I wanted to put it out there before we, you know, before it ends up back on the agenda again.
One thought is initially this whole review process started as something where we were just going to get a couple known errors. We just wanted to get those out the door and then we'll come back to it later. I wonder if we reconsider that and be like, these are the areas we already know need to be, let's get that done and then spend the next year and a half actually reviewing it and coming up with a full blown redo. Because this is clearly, especially for a year long process, more...
The only caveat to that, I think Kale, is, I mean, I agree with you and you, obviously you know, you know this far better than me, but since we are, since we are where we are and these would have to go through the next town meeting, since, since it's not like anything's going to get through this town meeting. I don't, does it make sense to chop it up into two pieces? I mean, I would agree with you for sure if it was two months ago and we could get some stuff through town meeting. That's just, that's just what I was thinking of.
Now, well, I guess in that sense, if we have to wait until the next town meeting, we should probably at least have a deadline where like, if we haven't finished with the review, we need to take what we figured out and get it on the ballot for town meeting.
I agree with that.
At some point in the fall, if we're not done, we should take what we have and try to pass that.
You're not talking about this town meeting?
No, it's too late for that, way too late, yeah, next year.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But now, you know, is this really going to be more efficient having groups work on it and then everybody coming back and then going through the whole thing again? You know, I don't know if that's really saving time.
Well Kale, the way I understand it, you're thinking to, to have two or whatever number of people look at just one part.
Yeah, one part, exactly.
Not the whole thing.
Yeah, exactly. And I was thinking maybe this, the, what kind of spurred my, my thinking on this was, was actually you Bart. I realized, I was like, oh, we have subject matter experts here, you know, zoning law, municipal law, transportation. Tim is builder, like we have real, we have some subject matter expertise here and maybe we could harness that towards, you know, a, a, like, by giving, by, or not giving, but like letting people volunteer for those sort of details and...
Sending leads or something.
Right, exactly, so, you know, so that we'd have like the first sort of opinion about it presented to the, the planning commission be coming from someone who has, has some like professional experience in that particular subject matter, who could give us sort of more of an introduction to say like, oh yeah, you know, like, so I read through like section 4.1, you know, 4.02 on adaptive reuse. And as a builder, here's one of my thoughts about like barns and how, you know, and I think that this little bit doesn't make sense, but you know, these are just my thoughts, let's kick it open to the group. So that's kind of, that's kind of my thought, I mean, but then again, I haven't been working with the commission long enough to necessarily say that that isn't happening and I'm not saying that it, that it isn't. I was just, you know, I just was, my mind was going, so figured I'd throw it on the agenda and I put it in front of the group.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I'm not opposed to doing it as you're suggesting. Everybody here seems to be leaning in that direction. Like Bart, do you have any particular feelings about one way or the other?
I, I think we ought to try it.
Yeah, yeah.
If it doesn't work, go back the other way.
That is true, yeah, I guess that is true. Okay.
Well, okay. The other thing about it is we've done a whole lot of work on it and, you know, but it's so far in the past, you know, it's a little bit hazy at this point.
Yes, yeah.
Have to review it.
We did a, we did a printout of what has been done.
Well, that would actually be good if there was a printout that could be passed around at some point, so we can all remind ourselves.
Yeah, I've got the Bible over there with everything that's been supposedly, everything that's been changed, but...
It's a full handwritten document, or handwritten notes on the floor.
Handwritten notes on just a printed copy of the regulations basically, like a loosely copy of it. So, and I'm not entirely sure that that does have all of the, you know, agreed upon changes.
There is some stuff on the server that me and Brian worked through, not all before I left the ZEA position. I'm not sure you're aware of or not, that's mostly...
Those are included Kale, the mountain bike notes are all included in the, in the, in the, in the Bible as Nick called it.
I think maybe the next step actually would be get the printout.
Yeah.
Have everybody read it through.
Okay.
Because there are probably going to be errors in that, maybe, maybe not, hopefully not, but, you know, it's been so long and handwritten notes and everything.
So it sounds like to me the most helpful thing, regardless of how we want to continue reviewing things or processes we want to, the best thing for, that you guys could have would be a baseline of what, of what changes have been suggested and agreed on so that you guys can kind of take it from there.
Yeah, that would be good.
That I can provide, it might take me a few weeks to, to get through it. Yeah, yeah, but I think that, that's something that I think I can work up and we should probably have a system for tracking that before we go forward.
Regardless.
First step basically. Before we leave today, I might be able to show you where some of those old documents are, if I can remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Because I think I started...
Nick, do we put an agenda item on for the next meeting to try to, sort of moving in parallel with you establishing the baseline? Where maybe, hopefully everyone's at the next meeting and we can kind of divvy up into who wants to, who wants to do what based on subject matter expertise? Do we block out some time in the next meeting just to do that?
Well, what else do we have to be working on for the next meeting? Do we have, you know, a number of things that we're going to be working on there before we get this printout? That you're going to work on, you're going to take a couple of weeks on that anyway. Whether you come up with it before the next meeting.
Probably not, I'm going to be honest, there's a few other things that need to be done, but that's going to be clear.
And we have to address the ARPA funds this meeting and next meeting, right? We have each two, the next...
We have until, we have through the next meeting that we could address our refunds. So, yeah, at least for during round one. I mean, the ARPA process is going to go on past February, you know.
Shouldn't be any hurry on the select board part, I hope they're not making this rash decisions.
Yeah, well, hopefully you folks can give them some feedback to forestall anything like that. But the, yeah, I mean, I don't have any particular agenda items for next meeting. But it sounds like you think it might be a little bit hasty to try to, to try to move on planning out the, like returning to the bylaw thing. So maybe we'll just ignore, ignore that for another, another meeting and try to get back to it during March or April or something like that.
Okay, as soon as we can.
Once you get a tracking document done.
Yeah, even if you don't have a tracking document, if there's not a ton on the agenda, you might as well put it on there.
Okay.
But ideally we'd have a base document to work off of.
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess that sort of sets a path for the bylaws.
Perfect.
Unless there's anything else that someone would like to add to that, to move on to the review of the ARPA proposals. You know, I, we didn't, Sandy has this all this very good input here and it didn't end up on the agenda for today.
The proposals?
Yeah.
Well, I think it's under this section, right?
Oh, under ARPA?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay, good. Okay. Okay, so now we're on to ARPA.
On to ARPA, yeah. I'm just going to pull up the meeting packet with all the agendas and just to, just to, or in everyone, I think we got to, we got to, through number 20.
Remember what page is this one?
Uh, in our meeting packet, that is page, geez. It's early on because there's been 27 more proposed since then. Geez, okay.
I, I'm pretty sure that the Deborah Ross and Library one changed since we looked at it.
Has it?
Because it's all about, you know, using electrifying, I guess is, is the best way to say it.
More than HVAC?
I think so.
Well, they were asking for 157,000, so...
157 to 192 garage generator.
Was that the last one we looked at, right?
Yeah. Sorry.
Sorry, that was just a mislead.
Garage chair.
So, just, just remind me what our goal is right now while we look at these. It's just input as far as where we think it's appropriate or...
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I put this on here because I know that, just as a continuation, because more ARPA proposals had, had come in since last time we did, you know, last, last meeting. So I just put this in here because I, I wanted to make sure that everyone had a chance to continue the review that, that you guys started last time. I don't think anyone is demanding a particular product in terms of like output, but I just know that given that, that's to put that on there given that, you know...
I have a thought on that, I think it might, it might be a good idea, especially if we have strong thoughts one way or the other about any of these, maybe not all of them, to write a memo to the select board. Like based on these reasons, because of the town plan, we think this is a good idea and we think that's terrible. Maybe not addressing all, however many of them are, but picking up the ones that we think really address what we're looking for and the ones that really don't, if that exists. But you're right, I don't think there's any, other than that, I don't think there's any role for us, but...
So basically just recommend the ones that we think are appropriate, according to the town plan.
That's my thought, I don't know how this especially started last week, the last time I wasn't here.
I, I agree with Kale for what it's worth, like, I think that our comments are going to be lost and we're going to lose our sort of persuasiveness if we're to comment on like 40 different things, including like minor comments, whereas I think if we said like, look, these are five things we feel strongly about, making up a number that we think are, you know, priorities in the town plan and we'd love to see them focused on. And you know, this is one, this is one that we think doesn't comply with the town plan, although I don't even know if that would be necessary. I think it's more highlighting the few that we think are super important under the town plan and that would, you know, help us accomplish the goals of the town plan. I feel like by commenting on too much, I don't know, we might, we might lose something. I don't know if I'm saying that well.
I agree.
Now, just, just to remind everybody that it's, the ARPA funds don't have to actually be supported by the town plan. It's just that whatever is done there can't violate the town plan. So if there's something there that is a energy sink using a lot of energy, in other words, that would violate the town plan, so we would have to say that, no, that's not one that we should be doing. But we can do something that's totally outside the town plan, we just can't violate the town plan.
Before we get into these, can I just ask about the several that I created? Did people get copies of those?
So, yeah, yeah.
Very well done.
I have a question about the stormwater one.
Sure.
Too early for questions? Why, why did you choose the Maple Leaf Farm one? Was that the highest priority one in the plan?
There's five, five priority ones, I think that was number two on the list.
Okay.
The first one was the Underhill Central School one, which seemed a lot more complicated. And this was number two and when you looked at the amount of phosphorus and sedimentation that, that was coming off from the Maple Leaf Farm parking lot, it really was the highest of all of them. So that was why I thought that, that would be good and I talked to Brad about it. He agreed, there were complications with some of the other ones that would have to be, you know, more dealing with, with transportation to get those done. So he thought that was a good one. In the storm, master storm, stormwater master plan, it listed at 36,000 to do that one, but that was five years ago, so Brad was suggesting we put it in at 40,000.
When you said that, I was thinking closer to 50. I have, I have no idea.
Yeah, well, anyways, as, as part of the, to finish it, they'll have to have the cost part put on and that's something Brad can help with on that, as long as you, you think that's a good one. I mean, these, I wrote these up as something that the planning commission, it supported the town plan and something that, that we think should be accomplished, that one. And then the, the other one, the road segment one... Every few years, they reassess road segments as far as erosion and runoff. There are, there's 13 that haven't been done yet that are in the very high priority category. So those would be the ones that we would try to focus on getting done. Most of the engineering and all of that is, is covered by other costs. But it would include materials like the big stone they put in the ditches. And that might be as much as $100,000. So there's those two, which are both stormwater related. And since that was a real high priority during the survey and for, for us, that would be what I'd suggest. And the other one really is one that I think would address trying to recognize our current farms and forest land and give landowners an opportunity to show off what they have. Give residents an opportunity to see what kinds of rural living things are going on around them that they don't know about. And try to work in some best management practice kind of ideas as well. So that was my thought there. I did talk to Angelique, that's how you say her name, at MLC TV. And she's excited about it. Most of their time will be donated, so it'll be some materials and that kind of thing.
I think it was very, these are really good presentations for these ideas and thanks a lot for doing that. We aren't actually grading the ARPA proposals.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, no one's, no one's, it's, it's been a lot of discussion, you know, as we, as we all know about what, you know, is there, are we going to do a rubric? How are we going to grade things? I don't really, I'll let you guys determine what you want to send to the select board or the ARPA committee or, or if anything. But I did have, I did have one suggestion. I mean, it's pretty obvious that, I'm just taking a look at some of these here and I, and that for those watching, I will share my screen. And, let's go to the entire screen. And then, and you can see on these, we have 40, oh, 49 and with Sandy's, make that 51, we've done 20. A lot of these are not, a lot of these have nothing to do with, with the planning commission's purview. I think pretty obviously, for instance, you know, the food shelf, and I would argue some of the stuff involving the equipment for the fire department. So I was gonna, I was thinking we could probably just go through, if you were okay with it, I could just highlight the ones that I felt were most related to the planning commission's work and we could go through those. Would that, that sound acceptable to everyone?
Hey, Nick, could, could, could I chime in real quick, just as the person and Val was there too? And if, if I'm the one who has to go back, not that this is about me. I think if we grade these, which is a word I'm very worried about using sort of conceptually, I just think it's going to go over exceptionally poorly. I think, I think, and I'm not trying to play wordsmith here, I mean, I think they were very clear about us not trying to do their job for them. For me, this is more about, and again, this is up to everyone, but just having been at the last one. I think for me, this is more about us putting forth ideas that like Sandy's or commenting on ideas they have that we think are particularly important under the town plan, which fall under a purview. I don't think we should, let's say 15 of these affect the town plan. I really don't think we should grade all 15. Again, it's up to everyone, but I do not think that would be received.
Makes sense, Brian. Yeah, I agree with you. Go through the ones in order, a handful that we think are good to point out to them.
So we'd basically be, be kind of saying, okay, here's 10 that we really think are, are strong, strongly support the town plan. Is that what you're saying? Something like that?
That's exactly what I'm saying, Sandy. So we're not commenting sort of negatively on any of them. We're instead saying, these are 10.
That works particularly well, given that Lee, who cannot make it today unfortunately, did send me an email earlier with 10 proposals plucked from this list that she feels ought to be advanced. So maybe when we're done, I can read those off as well. Sound, sound good, everyone?
Yeah, I like that idea. Another thing we should be thinking about is, is if there's anything missing and if the planning commission itself wants to put forth a proposal for more than one.
Yeah, the ARPA committee has made it clear that they would take, they will, they will continue to take proposals from the planning commission.
On that front, well, it's on my mind before I lose it. I haven't gone through every single one of them, but I scanned a bunch of them. I didn't, one thing that I thought would be valuable is setting aside a chunk of cash for matches on grant opportunities. I don't know how much that chunk of cash should be, but it's a way to take this money we have now and make it bigger. Like this X amount thousands of dollars set aside for future matches on future grants.
That's really smart, Kale, and it doesn't require detail today.
No. The only thing that would be important would be a number and really we, the select board could probably decide that on their own. We could give them some ideas and let them figure out what's the best.
Would that mean the ARPA regulation that the money has to be spent by whatever data?
It's unregulated now, right? It's free money.
Okay.
Wow, okay. Get that memo, that's great.
Can't use federal money to match federal grants. I think that even applies if it's coming through the state, but it's originally federal. And then we couldn't match with ARPA.
There's some strange accounting practice in that once it's, that accounting practice is done, the federal character is gone and it's just town money. And I've talked to Jen about it and they're planning on using that process. So once that's done, there's no timeline, there's no restrictions on how it's used, it's just surplus money.
Okay.
It is, right.
Printing press.
Amazing how nervous.
Well, I think it came, what I understand is they, I think the feds were realizing it was too difficult to put all these rules on every single municipality in there. So they got to the point where like, if you're under X amount of dollars or X amount of people, those are basically just gone.
We're just not going to bother, is what they're saying.
Essentially, no, that's what, they said you can use it for operating expenses. So that then you can opt use it for all of this year's off, operating expenses and then take all the tax dollars and put it into excess. So then next year, it's just excess money that's already been raised, but no longer has any.
Interesting.
All you need to know is that that, all that federal character is gone or will be gone.
Yeah, yeah.
Doesn't mean we shouldn't follow the spirit, but there won't be any rules around it.
That is interesting information.
Okay, so where do we go from here? Do we want to put together a list or?
Yes.
Dan, let's see some proposals?
Yeah.
We've, let's see, we've gone through one through 20. Oh, we're out of memory. Geez. All right, there we go. So, yeah, I'll make this real fast here. Okay, so, let's go to number 21. That's supposed to be a center, Center to Flats Path. Folks joining us remotely, can you see this?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Great, thank you. Have we actually looked at this already? We may have. Someone, West Carr has proposed a 2.7 mile path to connect the two villages. Breaks it into three phases, feasibility study and then two phases. But essentially this builds off of the proposal from the Recreation Committee that's now being put to CCRPC as a, as a scoping study. And that's the proposal. Yep.
So basically another feasibility, feasibility study for a path.
Feasibility study for a path, this time outside of the, perhaps this map is a little bit better of a description I could give. Yeah, this time though, including River Road from the edge of the Underhill Flats Village, as well as some kind of sidewalk or path within Underhill Center as well, so.
Wasn't that part already happening?
The River Road section?
Center section.
The center section has shown up in the ARPA committee proposals on a number of occasions. And I put forward the CCRPC thing. So currently, yes, we're in the running for being, being funded by CCRPC to do a feasibility study there and several ARPA proposals relate to that directly, this being one of them. This is the most geographically expansive one that we have seen so far.
I was just saying that because it seems like the set, the phase one, the Underhill Center section is kind of moot because it's already happening in other realms.
Yeah, assuming.
So he's kind of proposing phase two, which is the long stretch of River Road.
Long stretch of River Road, yeah.
So this proposal was for both, basically?
For both.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. So it sounds like a, something I would just forward to him.
So, okay, so that's one. Moving on, this will be familiar to anyone who's been paying attention, pedestrian byway in the Underhill Flat, or Underhill Center. So between Underhill Central School and Browns River Middle School, this is basically the exact same proposal.
Yep.
Yep, yep, same proposal. I don't think we have to get too much into this.
Points out those support for it though.
Yeah, there was so much support for sidewalks and paths from Underhill Center School.
I like the, the phrasing pedestrian byway. It's a nice, nice way to put it. Any further comments on that?
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. Extend bus service to Morrisville. Here's a planning commission purview. Burlington to Jeffersonville bus, extend it to Morrisville. So, take the Jefferson commuter and make it the Mobile commuter.
That's, the, unless it's already there, it's already happening, that's not really anything we can do. What's, what's the bus service? They're the one that would do that and we'd help pay for it. I feel like we can't tell them to do that kind of thing.
Yeah, there's a tri-town group that helped get the current bus, but there isn't any. I mean, it would have to be a, a different group that would propose that.
Right, so.
And that's not a one-time expense either, that's an ongoing one. We would spend the ARPA and then be obligated.
Yeah.
Continuing.
It's an interesting idea. I don't know how it fits though.
It is an interesting idea. I was thinking, you know, just when I saw this, my mind got working. I was thinking, well, how could we categorize this into something that the ARPA committee or the town could deal with? Because this would be a multi-town, multi-municipality sort of thing where it happened. I was thinking, well, you know, one-time expense could be to buy, to, could be to buy a vehicle. And then, you know, the town's role could be to continue to, yeah, provide funding and logistical support for it as an ongoing thing. But this is a very complicated, it's even more complicated than any of the sidewalk stuff we've looked into because it crosses municipal lines. I believe GMT is its own municipality, a corporation maybe, yeah. So it's a total legal entity, so there, it would be a, there'd be a lot of moving parts to this and it would have ongoing expenses, so.
Every time I go by the park and ride, I take a look at how many people are using it. It's like two, three cars most of the time. It's incredibly underused.
My, my feeling is.
I know that from Jeffersonville, there's a lot of commuters, Jeffersonville and Cambridge, the times I've ridden it. It's already got a bunch of people on it, yeah.
So it's got, it's got plenty of riders, but it's just not picking up many people here.
Not too many, no. Few people go to the Cambridge Park, you know, to park there to get on. Few people from Underhill.
Which direction are they going?
To Burlington.
To Burlington, yeah, okay, yeah. Okay. Any other feedback on this one? Okay, sounds pretty clear to me. Who we gained was here. It's like that was Val. Okay, see you, Val. So, neighbors helping neighbors, that's a social services, more park improvements. And I'm going to move through these quickly and just stop me, shout out if you want to take a, a longer look at some of these and I'm skipping over. More park improvements seems more up recreation's alley, but I figured I'd throw it out there. We, you know, someone is calling for improving grounds, trails to Brown, Trails to Brown River. Potentially a gazebo or a bandstand. This is all more park right across the street from Town Hall. So, so in fact, it's the same person who appears to have submitted the Morrisonville, Morrisonville bus plan. So, we have that. Moving on, town pond place structure, I think we can probably safely, so there's a handful of ones here. We have more park, town pond, place structure and court rebound wall. We could probably leave those uncommented on, seeing as they're more on the recreation community side of things. Yeah, they're all fairly low dollar asks as well.
Are these, are we, are you going through 10 basically that we have thought of?
I'm just catching up, catching everyone up on all the ones that have been submitted since the last time we, we met. And that's numbers 21 through, you know, now 51. So I'm, we're going to skip over some of these, but Town Hall improvement's probably worth looking into. This is coming from Jen in the town staff. And this is a, this is a full-on description of, quite lengthy, of a bunch of different proposals totaling to $100,000 for a variety of different improvements made. It's, it's a renovation project, including flooring all the way up to ceiling, but there's also energy efficiency things, adding more conference space, painting, that sort of stuff, sealing things up, so.
Decades.
$100,000 asked for that. Yeah. So we have that. That's coming from Jen. Town Hall generator, same sort of general category. This is coming from the Energy Committee though, and pretty similar asks to the, the Town Garage Generator, a generator for here. This is, you know, would help to add some, some like emergency response capacity to the Town Hall. And we have a quote, I believe, do we have a quote, $11,000 for installation.
What type of generator is that? Is that a propane?
I believe it's propane, yeah, yeah.
What do they do now in the?
Like a generator reliable?
I don't know. It's never gone out when I'm here. I've had the fire alarm go off.
It's just closed.
We've had one.
Yeah, but it was, it went out for a few days.
If you have a service.
There should be some type of backup, it seems. Seems like a.
So.
So yeah, maybe there is some. No, I think there was. I feel like the power went out when I was here. I will say though, as a resident of the center, the power does not go off, out very often on this stretch and when it does, it's back on really fast.
Yeah, right. Interesting. Sand Hill Cemetery, I'm not going to go into detail on this one, but we folks know about the Sand Hill Cemetery. It doesn't have direct pedestrian access and someone is asking to basically put some town, town labor into clearing and creating a more obvious path with a little bit of signage to direct people to this publicly owned piece of land that is, that is otherwise unknown and inaccessible. So that's the proposal. Streetlights. Change out the existing ones for LEDs within the village limits of both villages. And we have 154 a year per, per year per light, according to one Bob Kennedy at GMPC.
I thought they were already changed out too.
I don't know about that. So, let's see, beautification of town properties, I think we can probably skip that one. It's really just a, it's similar to the Town Hall renovations, but with less structural stuff. Reserve for sidewalk construction. So Oriosarian, building off of the, the work that's been done already by the, by this committee and, but especially the rec committee, want to shout out the rec committee. A proposal has come forward to set aside money for, in fact, the entire ARPA award to the, to the building of the sidewalk center project.
It's purchasing the materials and putting them aside. It's purchasing the materials and putting them aside for when it gets built.
Yeah, okay, that's the, okay. So. So there we go, that's, that's that proposal that's out there. Food shelf, okay, electric vehicle, probably worth touching on. A proposal to buy an electric vehicle for town employee and citizen use from the Energy Committee, noting that transportation is the single largest contributor to the energy and carbon footprint. So. That would be very interesting. Speaking as a town staff member who has to drive occasionally for town business. You know, this would mean that I could always get to work on my bike without having to worry if I had to publish out some stuff. But that's my only comment on it. It would also, I guess my other comment would, this would also probably be contingent on some kind of power bank or charging station being installed here at the Town Hall for that use, so. It probably wouldn't come just as, the cost would not be limited to simply the electric vehicle, but yeah, so there we go. On the other hand, as we'll see in the coming proposals, a number of people have suggested purchasing and installing electric vehicle chargers here at the Town Hall.
That was, it just comes to mind, everything, not just the charger station, even if we didn't get the car, just installing a charging station would be an interest, would be a good worthwhile project.
And we will get to, does anyone want to weigh in on this one? What's up? Doesn't sound like it, so UCS Playground, similar thing, Flats Recreation Field, both proposals for, yeah, enhancing. Actually, Flats Recreation Field, I guess I don't know that much.
Well, it's, it's a moot point because he's talking about buying the place with the. He didn't really research it.
Got it, okay, there we go. Town Hall Solar. The Energy Committee is just going, going crazy on these right now.
I mean, that.
Very prolific.
It seems like a no-brainer in a lot of ways, but.
Yeah, so we have.
Might be able to get away with not having a generator if you do that right.
Well, you have to have a power wall, but you can get that for, for next to nothing because there's just green mountain power here. Yeah. They're co-op, because they'll, they'll lease it to you, the batteries. So I would think that would, I'm surprised that they actually thought about the generator because if you had a power wall with solar panels, it would probably keep a building like this at least warm enough for a day, a couple of days, a day or two, I would imagine, but.
Yeah, they, they probably know more than we do.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably.
They should, yeah, I'm sure they do. Put all the energy. So, so we have the Energy Committee's recommendation. Town Hall Lighting Upgrade, I think that's pretty self-explanatory. GSHP, I actually don't remember what that is. Oh, Ground Source Heat Pump Feasibility Study, that's pretty self-explanatory. Again, from the prolific Michael Omon of the Underhill Energy Committee. Yeah, truly the Alexander Hamilton of the ARPA Committee.
Good idea, though.
He, yep, so another similar, so this is for, rather than the equipment, a consult, like a consultant study of the feasibility of doing this, so that's one there. EV Charging Station, we've alluded to it, Michael is there with the details. I don't know what a dual-port level charging station is, I guess that means two plugs, but yeah. A level-two charging station that I understand is the sort of like medium-speed one. It takes less than overnight, but you can't get it done in like 45 minutes. But anyway, I think, like, my understanding is these are the standard charging stations that you see when you see like a Tesla logo out near a gas station or something.
It's only 2,500? Am I reading the right one?
It's 5,200.
Must be like getting the wrong one. I'm going to get this heat pump one.
Yeah, those got really disordered. I'm not sure what the deal is, but yeah. So 5,200, correct, Sandy? Yeah, after rebate.
After rebate.
So that's been proposed. Town Hall Electric Upgrades, I wonder, oh, yeah, it's Michael again. This would be, this, these are all sort of like phases of the similar project, it seems, where they sort of add up to a larger project of, you know, re-electrification of town properties. So I guess this is to account for evidently needed upgrades to some of the basic infrastructure to support the PV, proposed PV solar and heat pump, et cetera. Electric Town Truck, pretty similar proposal to the car.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, Botanic Garden, we're almost there, by the way. Botanic Garden, I actually have not looked at this one carefully here, but. Oh, no, I did look at this one and to be honest with you, I'm not entirely sure where the proposed Botanic Garden would necessarily be, I think maybe at a school. That's the butterfly garden. Yeah. This follows a, this proposal follows a particular, a sort of a template plan for establishing a Botanic Garden through a nonprofit and proposes to spend 45 to 70,000 on following through on that plan. I guess the reason there isn't a specific site is the plan that they suggest to follow has finding sites as part of the plan. So that's, accounts for the lack of detail. Okay, EAB Treatment. ARPA Advisory Committee, yes, correct. This is Emerald Ashbore. The town's tree warden, Don Toby, proposed that money be spent on doing roadside tree work to account for the impending canopy loss due to Emerald Ashbore. So. There is no solid ask, but a ballpark of 200,000 is, is proposed here.
Didn't they propose it's going to cost 200,000 to remove everything from the town?
Yeah.
Everything from the town, okay.
And how much is it to treat them?
Not sure what the treatment is.
You can't treat it.
No, I thought that's what he's calling for.
No, the treatment is removal of, preemptive removal.
No, there is a treatment that prolongs there. I thought that's what he was getting at.
Okay.
It doesn't stop it, it just prolongs them and lets them stay longer.
Okay.
I thought that was what he was getting at, but maybe I wasn't listening closely.
Yeah. This is apparently not for that.
Just for removal.
Just for removal along road sides. UJFD Repeater, I did read that one. The repeater is an essential piece of radio gear for the, the fire department. Evidently, supply chain issues make it unlikely that they'd be able to readily replace the one that they have, should it fail, and they'd like to buy a backup. So that's that.
Did they, did they say it was going to be a year and a half to replace it?
They said if they ordered it now, it would take a year and a half to replace it, yeah.
So if that repeater went down and they were without communication for a year and a half, that would be tough.
They could have a real issue, yeah.
One thing I thought reading these, it wasn't clear to me, because I probably said it reading them all word for word, is all these, like, the fire department ones and the park district ones, did they discuss how much they were asking from Jericho?
Uh, I think it varies proposal to proposal. I think so far, all the ones that I've seen allude to a cost sharing, even if they just say, you guys work it out. But I think they, most of them say, we're asking both of you, both Jericho and Underhill for it. So most of the, most of the requesters have been, are aware of that, and we're not the only people being asked. But that's a good thing to consider, I suppose, and I guess that's something that the ARPA Committee might, might have to, to, to deal with if they want to move on any of those, but.
One of them, they proposed a 60-40 cost share.
Yeah, I think that's a general cost share, so I wonder if they did that ahead of time and gave a proposal for 40% to us and 60% to them.
That might be it. Monarch Preservation, this is a cute one. It's basically, let's put in some monarch-friendly pollinator gardens at Underhill Central School and Browns River Middle School. So very small ask, and that's coming from, I believe, a teacher or a school staff in the, remember? Casey's Infiltration, I have not read this one yet, so. Oh, it occurs to me that the sledding hill would be much improved if it did not contain a large area of saturated soil at the bottom. I did get my boots wet on that the other day when I was taking pictures up there. So in order that the sliders no longer have to bail before they experience the joys of a long run out, Dan Lee proposes that we, what, spend $40,000 to, I guess, do some landscaping and as part of the parking lot expansion to eliminate that issue. And lastly, in this, not counting Sandy's, we have another one from Jen. Proposal to install stormwater chambers underground at the town right-of-way. Yeah, I'm not sure if I totally understand this one, I'll be honest, but the ask is $80,000, it relates to stormwater.
Where's that now?
This is currently stormwater is conveyed through a culvert underneath Rain Road into a ditch on our property. Yeah.
Hey, I'll just letting you know, I'm going to have to walk off. They. I'm a little bit unclear which exact patient this refers to. Please, just to give them a number if they're Rain Road, so it's under the lower streams. Other than behind, stay there, just a entry with a little bit of water. Get it out, and just not from that. Okay, so that does it for the submitted proposals. Stop sharing this part of the screen, and then of course we got with the Sandys. Before we get to the discussion, I was going to just read all the vows, or sorry. Lee's recommendations or preferences, everything with that. Lee likes the big bike path for the whole boat, all of the feet. It's likely the only time where we're to create it. I believe she means the full multi-use path, you know, village. Phase one, phase two, any phase that, you know, her four buyers, yeah, all phases, so that's number one. Lee also likes the idea of ground solar at the Town Hall, plus a charging station, a generator and a power wall for the Town Hall. Some of these combined some ideas, but we'll say 10 ideas if not 10 exact purposes. Let's see, Underhill Center wastewater and oval water feasibility. We would also like to see the natural resource inventory and mapping project get funded and completed. She'd like to see battery-powered tools for the fire department, as for their request, we didn't. We would also like to see town records digitized, the Underhill Central School playground proposal, we did not. Detail, she'd like to see that funded, the Town Hall upgrades, and also the Underhill Central School.
I like a lot of them, but we're going back to the, we should stick with the review. Big bike path, obviously. And wastewater and resource inventory mapping. Power in the town. I feel like that's still in the Energy Committee, I mean, we do in the sense that we're.
Energy section is all of that. Everything is a little bit, you know, a little bit.
Something we haven't talked about is the natural resource inventory.
Yeah, that's one of the issues, yeah.
She did?
I think that's a moderator.
Sorry, folks, just saying, we got a chat from Jared who's watching, letting us know that the audio session has gotten choppy. Stand the videos, so I'm not sure if that's a connection issue, we'll just need to try to address them, the central maker from here. We'll start with the second, see what happens. Thanks for speaking, Jared, appreciate it.
I think Jared's going to rejoin back up again, but yeah, sorry, I didn't just interrupt.
So are there any further comments on this list or additions to that? Draft, basically?
I don't know if we're ready to nail down a list of stuff to submit.
Maybe we should all review the list, come back, but then come back. Really start nailing down which ones. Try to think about whether it's in our review or not, if you're not sure, just put it on your list.
Right. I think that would be the best.
I think that's a good idea.
Well, so we've talked about net, two things for next meeting, which is put bylaw review back on the agenda, perhaps, if there's not much else. And then there's also ARPA stuff. So if we wanted to, in the interest of getting out information and meeting packets to everyone, we've given everyone lots and lots of time to review all this stuff. I could put together, I could like put together an agenda and meeting packets for next meeting as of like tomorrow, push those out and give everyone two weeks to review everything.
That would be great.
We could, you would still leave time to add things to the agenda at the meeting in the additions to agenda section of the agenda.
I must add that I've learned since I've been at VLCT that you are, the law doesn't, you're not really supposed to.
Oh, okay.
That's, like, if you have, if you don't have time to warrant to put out a new agenda, you're supposed to. At least that's, that's our organization's advice, that's our, our attorneys would say that, not add anything new.
Well, then we should probably add compliance with public meeting law to the agenda.
You can add anything new to an agenda?
It's questionable.
I mean, we, or can.
We added stuff today to, but it was on, what was on?
Yeah, I mean, all this open meeting law stuff also comes down to, are you really, does someone really agree with bias? I'm going to challenge you on it, but if you were to, if you were to send that question to the lawyers of Vermont Legal Cities and Towns, we'd say no. If you, if you have time to send out, to put out a new agenda, do it. If you don't, warn the special meeting and wait till then to talk about it.
I see, okay, so if it's something that's.
Like non-substantive or something.
Well, if it's something that is controversial, basically.
Especially, yeah.
Yeah, we shouldn't, shouldn't add that to an agenda because people want to be able to put comments.
Yeah, because otherwise you don't give anyone notice of what you're talking about. You're talking about something that no one knows about. They might have wanted to be there, but they can't because they didn't know about it.
Yeah, and then that person would have to attend every meeting and sit through the public comment.
To find out.
Find out if it's going to be on there. That makes sense, okay, well.
I didn't know that for years, I was always letting that happen, too. I recently came to that realization.
Well, it's good to have you here, Neil.
Good point.
Yeah. Okay, so in the interest of giving everyone lots and lots of time and lots and lots of warning.
You have plenty of time to add to something.
Yeah.
Because we can put out a new agenda.
So I'll draw a fairly sparse agenda and meeting link and pu, and publish that tomorrow. For our next, that would be on the, what, the 19th, the 16th. And the agenda items will be continued ARPA review and bylaw modernization. And I will send out with that a meeting packet that has everything from this last meeting packet plus Sandy's additions or proposals, does that sound fair? Give everyone two weeks to review all of the contents of that meeting packet, including, yeah, the agenda, the minutes from the last two meetings and the, and all these proposals plus Sandy's. And then the first item for the meeting in two weeks will be to put out some kind of statement or memo or recommendations or some kind of product for like expressing the planning commission's feelings on, on these, on these proposals.
Well, should we, you know, begin with a proposed agenda and then have a final agenda sent out a day before? How soon?
Yeah, I could, I could, yeah, I could do that, yeah, for sure.
Isn't that much?
Yeah, yeah.
Get us a proposed agenda and if we add anything, as long as it's 48 hours in advance.
Oh, is it 48 hours?
Yeah.
That's, okay, so two days.
All right, yeah, I'll put up a proposed one. There's nothing, there wouldn't be nothing stopping us from doing that, right? I could draft an agenda and meeting packet up and then analyzing it.
No, not at all, as long as the finals up in two days, I think.
Okay. So as far as.
You probably want to make it clear that it's a draft if you're posting it somewhere. Otherwise, you could just have the draft around us and wait till we have a final to post anything. Otherwise, you could just have the draft around us and wait till we have a final to post anything.
The real reason I'm asking is because this meeting packet is gonna be so big that I can't email it directly to everyone, and I will have to put it on our website. Then let you guys access it and download it. So, so by practical limitation, I'm gonna have to publish this on our website, so I wanted to just make sure that we're doing everything above board. So yeah, I will title a draft meeting packet with the, for the sixteenth of February. Same with the agenda, and I'll send the links to those once those are put together tomorrow. I'm not gonna be in the office tomorrow, by the way. I'm technically taking a vacation day, but I'm gonna be working in the morning, so.
Cancelled school tomorrow.
Yeah.
Take the day off too.
Yeah.
Eight blow for the high.
Jeez. And I'm going to Buffalo, New York, so we're gonna see if it's. It might actually be warmer for this winter change.
Nick, I have a question about these proposals that I have. Is the ARPA committee okay with waiting, or should I finish these right up and?
I would just get in touch with Jen and ask her. Jen Silby Katz. Yeah, I'm not entirely sure what, what the ARPA committee is expecting necessarily. But they have made it clear that, that they, they're still interested in taking proposals, at least from the planning commission. You know, but so, and they won't be meeting until, I think, the twentieth? So I would say talk to Jen and see if they want to see it sooner rather than later, and if so, in what format. I'm assuming that at some point she'll probably, she'll probably ask you to put them in the same format of like application that we've seen so far. Whether or not the, there's any preference on whether that should come from the planning commission or from you as an individual, I would leap up to, I would defer to Jen's judgment on, on that. Because I'm just not, yeah, I guess they've got their own process, so.
I got a question about the sidewalk. Just a terrifying question.
Yeah.
So if, there are like four different proposals for the sidewalk.
There are, yeah.
And you've already applied for the grant for the feasibility study just for the Underhill Center.
Just for the center, correct, yeah. Sand Hill Road to, to, to Moski Meadow.
So everybody, so there's interest in continuing it all the way down to the flats.
And indeed, there's been a study of.
Oh, it's in the study that you're.
No, actually.
The study that I'm aware of, though, is just a widened shoulder. It's not a bike path. It's not a sidewalk. It's a widened shoulder, kind of like, it'd be like Route fifteen. Fog lane where someone can bike and walk in.
So you, so you applied for the grant with the Chitney County region.
The regional planning, yeah.
Just for a wide shoulder.
No, that was done before I, I got here. I think, Kale, were you?
No, I wasn't. I want to say it's, it's like two thousand fifteen or something. This year's ago.
Oh, the wide shoulder.
Kurt Johnson's utilizing it as planning for creating that road right now, so unless.
No, the select board actually voted down.
voted it down.
Oh.
Yeah, we had it in our climate change action plan, and the CCRPC person said, oh, do you realize that the select board can't voted it down? So I don't know. Probably a year or so ago.
Do you know, so was the proposal simply to just build out what had been described in the, in the study? Or something like that?
I think so.
Okay.
I think the, the problem, I think, came up as, as I said, rebuilding the whole.
Yeah, yeah.
Situation.
Well, Kurt said there's no road, there's no sub base, there's no shoulder, like the whole road needs to be stripped and rebuilt. So I wonder if it was cost prohibitive. I don't know.
May have been.
But according to Kurt, that stretch of river road is horrendous shape. It needs to be just completely redone.
Yeah, that's why I close my eyes whenever I drive it. I'll keep that in mind when I see.
So getting back to that, though, so to see the, the most recent feasibility study that we just signed up for.
Yeah.
Is just the center.
It's just the center.
So is there any way that, you know, it seems like there's, there's a lot of interest in extending it all the way to the flats, which everybody agreed would be a really awesome thing, I believe.
Yeah.
Is is it, would it be practical for us to put together a proposal that would kind of tie it all together so that instead of having four separate proposals that they're looking at, or will they do it? Will the ARPA committee come up with their own idea?
I wonder if that's one of our recommendations, is to say, take all these sidewalk things, we have the feasibility study going, that channel going.
Yeah.
And then do a separate feasibility study for this, for the long river road stretch that's not been talked about, when we should use that in our report to dial it down for them.
Right, because so you, so the feasibility study that you just, that we're trying to get done, that's not a given yet, is it?
It's not.
So we're just waiting to see if we can get on their schedule or?
Pretty much. They put it, they put together their whole scope of work each, you know, like leading up to each fiscal year.
Yeah.
And what we did a few weeks ago was to, and I say we as a town, what I, you know, what I did was to write an application to get into that scope of work. And to be one of the projects that they work on in FY twenty four.
Okay.
So.
So there's no way to get back to put another one in for the other?
I don't think so, no. We're past the deadline to, to, to ask for a second one. And, you know, so.
There might be other grants.
There might be other grants. There might be other planning opportunities. I mean, I think the, the stand, I mean, I'm, I'm keeping, I'm fairly new to this, but I, my understanding is that the sort of, if there's a standard way of doing these sorts of things, so far it's been to do, go with the path, so to speak, that we're on, which is go to CCRPC first for the scoping study, and then kind of like take it, and then once that's been produced, and you chose, and they've chosen, the town has chosen a, a best alternative, preferred alternative, then you kind of take it upon yourself to like, you know, raise the money and do any legal wrangling you need to do to like take it from a concept into, into reality. So all the other stuff. But so I guess the question is like, you know, is, are, is there another way to commission? We have, so we either wait until, you know, this time next year and then apply to RPC again for.
For that.
Yeah, exactly, that section, or find another way to commission if, if we just can't wait, and really want to get going on it, find another way to commission a, a scoping study, or I mean, just move forward without, you know, on like a upgrade with, without a scoping study, but I don't think anyone thinks that's a good idea. So, yeah.
In some sense, though, if, kind of the way that one guy's proposal was, we're already, we're already going on the path on the sidewalk in the center. That's phase one. I don't know if it's really that big of a deal if we wait until next year to put in the feasibility study for the next one and just have a big phase two, being prepared to be built right after the center.
Right.
I think it'd be too much for the town to take on all at once anyways.
Yeah.
And that seemed to really bring together the proposals, I think, didn't it?
Literally, they've already done, yeah, a lot of ways. Maybe point out his as a good.
Yeah.
Because it does kind of pull it all together.
His is pretty comprehensive, yeah, and, and it has a great vision, for sure. I mean, let, let's face it, any sidewalk out here would be really like, in, its value would be multiplied by having, yeah, bike path or a multi-use path that connects it to other sidewalks, because then you wouldn't have to like drive between sidewalk networks or something like that. So yeah, I mean, it would be a huge multiplier. The good news is, if we get started on a sidewalk here, there's nothing stopping us from also working on studying or building a path between the villages, and also a sidewalk here or one that's about to be constructed is even more incentive, you know, from like a political and fundraising perspective for building out of, planning a path there. So, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction.
We should likely do a succession plan if it works out.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's just my, the core of my question was, there's four studies or four proposals there.
Right.
We should, they, will they put them all together into one? I mean, you've already done it by applying for that.
It's, it's not entirely clear. People have asked me this question as well, like Isabel Tuck, who put, who had the original proposal in front of the ARPA committee for this feasibility study, asked me the same question the other day, like, oh, should I keep mine in now that you've submitted this thing? I just said, yeah, let's let the ARPA committee just, you know, go through all these, take them all in as one, and sort of say, and sort of, and let them do their thing with their process, and then, you know, if there's, if there's more, if we feel like, or you or anyone else feels like there's more to be said after that, then there'll be more opportunities to do so.
Yeah, because the ARPA committee is gonna send the proposal to the select board for approval.
It seemed, yeah, I, I, yeah, it's not entirely clear to me whether or not the ARPA committee is gonna just simply pass on these proposals as they're written, or tell people, hey, we like your proposal, we want, we would recommend it to the select board, we think that you ought to flush it out a little bit more, or we want to see this changed. It's not entirely clear to me what, what they have planned. All, I will note that all of these proposals, these applications have phase one written on them, implying that there will be future phases, so.
Well, it's, they're only mentioning half of our ARPA funds in the thing.
Yeah, I think that's because some of it's been.
It's because Brad's afraid to tell people about money that we don't have, yet even though we're definitely gonna get it.
Is that what it is? Okay.
That was the thing last year.
Okay, okay.
We're getting like a million and a half, but he kept telling people we're only getting like seven hundred fifty thousand or six.
So right now it's at a million and a half.
Or a million and change, but if you look at the doctor's that Jen passes out, it says six hundred and something. We got a chunk last summer, we're getting another chunk next summer.
I thought it was because we, the select board had already allocated some.
So that, or maybe that, maybe there's something about that.
The parking lot and stuff like that. Maybe it's a little bit of both.
Well, the parking lot was done before.
That was done before. Okay. Regardless, I think that if the, now that it's clear that there are like multiple proposals that all advocate for some kind of pedestrianization.
So much momentum and support to those.
Yeah, and something, you know, a, a memo or whatever the commission wants to send out up here to the ARPA committee could just simply make note of that and say like, yeah, you know, looks like there's a lot of strong support. We think this is the, this one like does a really good job of describing like what we think is the best version, so, you know, maybe, maybe ask the people to, yeah, like, for instance, I don't think there's anything stopping the ARPA committee asking the people, all the people who've, who have proposed like sidewalk stuff to just need separately and submit one united application. Like, that's, there's still room for them, there's still time for them to do that following this, this, you know, phase one.
So this is something actually that would be done when we put together a list.
Yeah, so when we come up with our list, we could just group them all together and say, maybe one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Suggest that this idea, which has been expressed in multiple forms.
Should be pursued however you think is best.
Yeah. And yeah, you couch that in like ten, you know, nine other bullet points or something like that. That, that can be, it could be one way to do it. But hey, we'll have two weeks to, you know, learn these proposals a little bit better and think of all the things that we want to communicate to the ARPA committee.
Bart already did his homework. One more question on the side of the feasibility study. Did you, are they paying for the match, or were they expecting to use the ARPA funds for the match?
The select board is not asking for money for the match, for ARPA money. They're, they're just gonna bump the, their solution was to bump the rec committees budget by sixteen thousand, which is the amount that I asked for in the match, and then have that come out of the rec committees. And then just, like, on top of what they were already gonna budget for the rec committee for this coming fiscal year, and then if we are approved, yeah, instruct the rec committee to just use that, that extra inflated, like boosted budget to, to pay for it. The way it works evidently, and you may already know this, is that if we are granted this, if we are, you know, accepted, if our study proposal is accepted and, you know, we get on their work, the RPC's work plan and stuff like that, they'll hire, we'll work with them to hire a consultant, and that consultant will just do the usual thing of billing regularly for whatever work they've done. RPC will pay that bill and then pass on twenty percent of that bill to us in a separate invoice. So we don't have to have sixteen thousand dollars just in hand on July one twenty twenty three, at the start of the new fiscal year, nor do we have to reserve that for a big bill, surprise bill or whatever at the end. It's money that we just have to, we just have to be able to commit to spending sixteen thousand over that fiscal year when RPC bills us for our share of whatever the consultants' costs are. And it's budgeted that if those consultants' costs are gonna be eighty thousand dollars, but could be less than that, so.
I don't know why they wouldn't just use ARPA money rather than tax money.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure. I think, well, I do know why. The reason was is because when I made that request, I hadn't had time to submit a formal proposal to the ARPA committee, and they didn't want to preclude the ARPA committee's work. So they just said, we have money to budget for this. We can, we can do this right now. Let's just make a note that next time we talk about budgets, we're gonna talk about it with an extra sixteen grand in the, in the rec committee budget. We can just do that.
Well, they were willing to do it.
Me too. I'm, I was very, very happy that, that they, that they wanted to do that, yeah.
I assumed that was a no, a no-go after the last meeting I was at. It's good to hear that you pulled, were able to pull it off.
Thanks, yeah. I think.
Seems like the window was too short, but you found a way into it.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it was, I, I, I think, I think, I think we just, they just needed, I think folks just needed to see a draft application and, and understand that that's, that's, it was a fairly low commitment sort of thing before we, you know, before they had enough information, and I guess, yeah, they have it, and they have enough information. We're coming up on seven thirty here.
So, okay, so, okay, I guess we've covered everything, and if there's anything else that, um, this point, no? Okay. Boris, thank you for coming on. Very good to have you showing interest.
I had a couple of questions. I don't know if you want to wait.
Sure.
To adjourn or?
Okay, it could be after we adjourn.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?